Sunday, July 12, 2021. Can we have our roll call, please? Sheila?
Ms. Bernard? I think you're still on mute. Nope, she's off mute. I just can't hear. Mr. Furman?
Present in Troy, Michigan.
Dr. Guadalupe?
Present in Parrish, Florida.
Dr. Hans? Mr. Landsman? Ms. Newman? Ms. Amy Dyer? Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Ms. Root? Dr. Todd?
Here.
Mr. Torres? Mr. Lindemere?
Here. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comments?
We have no public comment on the online form or no public present.
Okay, just as a reminder, there will be public comments later on in the agenda. A second opportunity for the public to comment. The next item on the agenda is a business operations report. And we are going to get a fiscal year 20 audit results from Anya with the BDO audit. Is that right? Great, okay. So Anya is going to make her way to the microphone when you're ready.
We should have BDO on the phone. So if you are on the phone, please go ahead.
I'm here.
Okay.
Do you have the materials that were sent? Yes. That is perfect. That's what I want to cover. And I'll do so briefly, but if you have any questions, please just let me know. I know this isn't the easiest and I pardon my tired, but I just got back from Taylor, actually, for the state softball tournament for Little League where we were playing. So if you could flip ahead to page three. Right. This is a letter stating that professional standards requires to communicate certain matters related to the audit that are in professional judgment significant. This is required communications to those charges of governance, and that's why I am presenting. But if you could flip ahead a couple more pages. The status of the audit, we did complete the audit for the year end September 30, 2020. The objective is to obtain reasonable, not absolute assurance about the financial statements, whether they are free of material misstatement. Scope of the work was the same as what we presented in the planning, and we did issue an unmodified, clean opinion or unqualified opinion on the financial statements and on the single audit report. Of course, all records and information we requested were freely available, and we appreciate management's excellent cooperation as always. If you could go to the next page. There were no significant changes in accounting policies or practices during the year. Let's skip ahead to page eight. This is the key one. There were no corrected or uncorrected misstatements. Corrected means adjustments that we brought to the attention of management. Uncorrected were would be less material or less significant items, but you have to evaluate those individually and in the aggregate. But there were no uncorrected or corrected misstatements. Once again, thank you. Skipping ahead to the next page, 10, one more, sorry. We do test internal controls. We look at internal controls. We don't provide an opinion on that. But if there was anything to notify you about regarding a control deficiency, significant deficiency or material weakness, we would let you know. And as stated down there, we have nothing to communicate to you regarding internal controls. Go ahead a couple more pages. Other required communications. As I said, no significant changes to the planned audit report. No consultations with other accountants we're aware of. No disagreements with management or significant difficulties encountered during the audit. And one more page. Representations from management, those are included in the management representation letter, which is available to you. That's where management is citing that they have provided us everything and let us know everything they know about. And one last thing. The independence, we do have to be independent. Sorry, the next page. We need to be independent of the organization. And here we're confirming our independence from the day of the engagement letter to the day of the audit report. Which was filed timely with, once again, a clean opinion. That's it. You have any other items for me to present? If not, I'm fine. If there are any questions, please let me know.
So if any of the board members have questions for our auditor, feel free to ask.
I apologize. I didn't introduce myself. I'm Doug Haveria, the engagement partner on the audit. Been on the engagement the entire time we've been working with the organization.
Well, thank you for the report and the work that BDO did on the audit. I just have one general question, and that is when is the full audit report available? Will it be made available to the public if they want to review it?
Anya, it should be available now.
Yep. So once this presentation is concluded, I believe next week at the actual board meeting, you'll vote to accept it, and then we would consider it for the public if they'd like to read it.
That makes sense.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any of the board members remotely? Oh, Dr. Hans?
Yeah. Aside from the audit, are there any recommendations that may be helpful?
Any recommendations to make to management, but they aren't significant enough to bring to the attention of the board. Otherwise, we would when I was talking about those deficiencies, significant deficiencies, et cetera.
Thank you.
Ms. Bernard has her hand up. She's online.
Hadass, do you have a question?
Hadass, can you type in your question? We're not sure why we can't hear you.
If there's any additional questions, we can certainly follow up if we aren't able to get to them this evening prior to next week's board meeting, where we will ask for approval.
Certainly.
Okay, if Hadass is able to type in her question or if she is able to ask the question later on if her microphone doesn't answer.
She doesn't chat in, I think.
No.
I can't. I can't read.
Okay, we'll work on getting her question. And whenever we get the question, we will respond to it.
She wants to know if the board can get a copy of the management letter, which I think she means management representation letter, which yes, that will be provided to the board. It'll be attached in the final copy of the report that I went over.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions, let's move on to Anya's May 2021 financial review report.
Okay, thank you for that report.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, so what you are looking at is the May 21 financials. So this is the typical eligibility and revenue trend that we see every month. And you can see that for May, it is continuing higher than prior year, which is that blue line going across, but you can see it leveling off a little bit. And so part of that we expected. So the spikes should stop happening related to revenue for the remainder of the fiscal year because there won't be any more payments for direct care wage that are more in a lump sum fashion. So the remainder of the direct care wage payments we get from the department will be basically one-fifth for the remainder of the year. So you would expect this to continue consistently. The only change we could potentially see now is related to the eligibility trend. So moving on to the next slide, which is specific to eligibility and not revenue. You can see that the eligibility trend is still well above where it was last fiscal year. But again, you do see it starting to flatten off a bit. So we do expect this to happen. As you've heard me talk about, pretty much since the pandemic started, our eligibility trend has been continuing to go up. And now, as things start to get better, and I'm crossing my fingers here, we would expect to see that start to trickle down a bit. Specifically with the Healthy Michigan population and potentially the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families population. So we will expect that to start to go down a little bit. Anyone that has been identified as the disabled, aged, and blind category will continue for the remainder of the fiscal year, and throughout the year, they are continued to be eligible. The department, I believe, either has or is planning to stop the continual eligibility, which they had done during the pandemic, where people were, once they were enrolled, they continued to be enrolled. So as things get better, we should expect to see that go down. So you'll start to see that go down a little bit. But that is when we have been focusing with our core providers prior to the pandemic on reenrollments in Medicaid and making sure people remain with their Medicaid or Healthy Michigan coverage. Moving to the next slide, please. Okay, so this is comparing the end of fiscal year 20 to May of 2021. And as you can see, our cash and investments is up significantly as it has been for most of the fiscal year. Excuse me. Receivables is down, but that's typical of a comparison of the end of a fiscal year to now we're well into the middle of the fiscal year. Other assets is roughly equal. You can see it is always pretty minimal. And then capital assets being our long-term investments just goes down slightly each month with depreciation. Moving on. So liabilities, you can see are significantly down compared to the end of the fiscal year. And you've heard me talk about before that at year end, we typically will book any payments that are due to any providers for services rendered, but they have not been paid. So you can see us continuing to work that down, and that will continue to go down for the remainder of the fiscal year. Due to state is roughly flat, and that's really us paying and accruing them for their portions of county, the local match and things like that that we would pay, not necessarily on a monthly basis, but we would accrue it on a monthly basis just to make sure that we're representing that expense. Employee payables is roughly the same, and long-term debt, again, continues to go down with any payments that are made on any long-term debt. Things like the Resource and Crisis Center lease and things like that. So our net position compared to the end of the fiscal year has gone up. Roughly $10 million in total assets. Total liabilities has gone down, so our net position has gone up pretty significantly. Little over $30 million on that particular net position chart. And we should continue to see that happen over the remainder of the fiscal year. And the hope is for us to be able to put some money back into our ISF at the end of this fiscal year, given we did use it all in those deficit years. Okay, so this revenue comparison is year-over-year. So what you're looking at is last fiscal year at this time compared to this fiscal year at this time. So you can see, for all the reasons we've discussed, Medicaid revenue is up significantly. General fund is roughly the same. County funds is exactly the same. And then all other funds is only slightly different, primarily due to grants. Next slide, please. Expenses, you can see administration is down. Provider network is up slightly, and that is primarily due to the $2 direct care wage enhancement that has been going on in addition to the increased expenses related to the staffing crisis and overtime. That I do expect to continue for the remainder of this fiscal year. Grants, you can see is down slightly, and that's really just due to some of the grants that we have expired or ended. And then all other is roughly the same. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is again the top 15 providers that we see every month, and we just lost something. Lucky for me, that was the end of my presentation. But I can take any questions if anyone has any questions.
Are there any questions for Anya from the board? Dr. Hans?
Yeah, it's good news that we will be funding the ISF. Any idea about to what extent that would be?
Well, so as we wrap up fiscal year 20, so the audit you just saw wraps up fiscal year 20, we'll only be putting a little bit into it in fiscal year 20. But if you recall, in fiscal year 18, we had a $25 million deficit. Fiscal year 19 was 20, and so now to come very close to break even was actually a really big swing. So we're on the right trajectory. I'm hopeful for fiscal year 21 to put at least $8 million in. That's my, I'd like to. Ideally, we would have a fully funded ISF so that if and when we do see revenue turn down a bit, that we have the resources to, again, keep providers whole to make sure that services are able to be provided.
And I have a follow-up question. Will this have any impact on our next year's budget?
So any money we put into reserves is intended not to be used in the next fiscal year. We have another category that's called carryforward, where if we wanted to, we could put money into what's called carryforward, but then you do have to use it in the next fiscal year, and that's not our goal right now. Our goal right now is to be able to rebuild that ISF to make sure that we have those resources. So it will not impact next year's revenue. And the way the actuary does our rates is they look at the expenses we incurred in the prior two-year period before, not necessarily just the year prior. Yep.
Could you expand or maybe go into depth for community members that may be attending the meeting? What is the ISF?
I apologize. I did use the acronym, didn't I?
And just to talk a little bit about it, and then like what are the industry recommended levels?
Sure. So ISF stands for Internal Services Fund. And so it is the mechanism by which we are allowed to keep Medicaid savings. So typically Medicaid would not allow you to keep any sort of savings. But we have a shared risk agreement with the department where we are at risk for the first 5% and then we have shared risk for the next 5%. So essentially, that makes us at risk for 7.5%. That also limits the amount we can keep to 7.5%. So the downside being that the way our funding works, we can swing more than that in one fiscal year, as you've seen. You've seen our revenue swung significantly up this fiscal year. It can swing more than that. So there's always been an argument that a 7.5% risk corridor is really not sufficient if we're talking about being able to fund swings like that. And so what happens is the actuaries go into, if they change the funding mechanisms, they have a tendency to do a hybrid method of doing that, where they'll take 50% the old method, 50% the new method, and combine them so that the swings aren't as significant. So we are actually currently in the second year of that methodology in doing that. For me personally, I'm not a huge fan of the shared risk arrangement just because it does put us, I would rather us be able to work through our efficiencies and be able to keep any additional revenue. That way, we can reinvest it into the system. We have used the risk corridor in fiscal year 19, which was the second of our two large deficit years. But that is just a contractual arrangement between OCHN and MDHHS, and that's consistent across the state.
So it sounds like Medicaid wants us to spend the money that we get.
Yeah, so typically, you know, Medicaid is intended to be necessary always and reasonable, and you have to spread it out over the life of things. So it's never really intended to be underfunded or overfunded. The goal is really to fund it appropriately. So, you know, the goal isn't really to have people keeping it, per se. It's really to make sure that the funding that is done. It's just that the way we're funded makes that very difficult because our funding is associated with things that are not necessarily tied to the needs of the people we serve.
Okay, one more question. You say that the state is going to end the continuing eligibility. Is that a date that we're going to anticipate when that's going to end? Or is that something that we just may not know and may not be able to plan for? And if we do know a date, are we able to plan for that so that we can adjust our finances accordingly?
So as far as the date goes, and I apologize, I would have been prepared for that had I thought of that. I don't know if the date has already happened or if it's the end of the fiscal year. It may be the end of the fiscal year. I just know they made that determine. So the whole point in doing that was that to keep people on with their coverage during the pandemic. And it really is just an end of auto renewal, for lack of a better way to say it. So it just means that someone that is qualified for Medicaid won't automatically be renewed. They'll have to fill out the paperwork again and get approved again. So it doesn't necessarily impact our finances other than it impacts what fund source a particular expense might hit. So of course, we always want people to be on Medicaid and/or Healthy Michigan. So one of the things we had done prior to the pandemic was to put an incentive in provider contracts to get people on full Medicaid. And so that incentive has continued, and I will say that that will be something we'll be monitoring to watch if and when people start to drop off. And we do have a dashboard that we monitor for people that are being served that do not have Medicaid.
Great. Thanks for the detailed answers. I'm surprised. Sorry for like...
No, it's fine. I tend to give more information than all of you ever want.
Probably, I mean, it's not only important for the board to understand these things, but it's important for the community to understand because they rely on a healthy OCHN for their services. So thank you. Christina?
Why don't you say it and I'll repeat it? So the question was, should we or have we planned to send out a communication related to the ending of the auto renewal with Medicaid and/or Healthy Michigan? So I would defer to Christine because I do not know if we have planned to. I do like that idea a lot because we definitely want people to be aware of that. I think if anything, we may have sent out a provider bulletin to our providers saying that because it would be the expectations that the providers are keeping up with the individuals they are serving. It is. Yep. Yep, thank you.
Erin, Hadass has a question. She thinks you can hear her now.
Okay, Hadass, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Okay, I apologize before. Anyway, thank you for that presentation. It's always really helpful. My question, or it's a request that I think I've had before. Just when we discuss the top 15 providers, since we have the same providers, you know, every month, can we have after that just a list, you know, maybe two pages, but that's okay, of the other approximate, you know, 150 providers that we give to monthly? Just a list of their names? Because just as it's helpful to have the top 15 providers, it's also helpful to know who are the other providers OCHN is helping.
Okay, sure. So you're looking for that list every month or just maybe periodically? Because it doesn't change drastically?
Yeah, I think every month is would be great because we don't often talk about the other providers, and at least we can look at them once a month.
Okay, I've gotten that written down.
Thank you.
Dennis? Thank you, Hadass. Dennis has a question.
Thank you. So I'll just make this quick. But the world I come from is municipal accounting. So we have something called the fund balance, which is really the savings, savings account, so to speak. I know you mentioned it's, is it ISF or, okay. But that has to do with a particular program. So overall, as an organization, do we have something similar to that? That would be like a fund balance?
So yeah, our balance sheet does show the fund balance overall. So when we speak of ISF or the Internal Service Fund, it's Medicaid only.
Exactly.
So we do have other funds, local funds, that are contributing to our net position that are not Medicaid. So that does come into play. So that would more be on our balance sheet, and you would see that on there, which is included in your board packet if you'd like to look at that specifically.
So my question is, do you have a, but is that considered the same thing as in the municipal world? It's kind of like a savings or leftover?
Net position is yes. We're still governmental accounting.
So do we have a target for that of a percentage? And where are we at with respect to that?
So we've, the department has never really given us a percentage other than our contract with the department does limit the amount of Medicaid we can have.
Right.
So that's limited to the 7.5%. We do not have any general fund reserves, per se, but we do have a fair amount of local reserves. We have never specifically talked about a target of how much. And that would have to be outside the Medicaid reserves. Simply because typically the local money that we get is intended to serve the community, not necessarily be saved to use as our fund balance.
Right. So we're primarily a cash-in, cash-out kind of organization?
Yes and no. I mean, I like a little cash in.
Well, I mean, it's the nature of the services that we provide. The money is supposed to go for the purpose in time.
Yeah, exactly. So we're just, we're never funded at a level that allows us to really put a lot away. But to some degree, our mission isn't intended to put money away. It's really intended to serve people. So it's kind of a balance of, yes, we have to have some risk reserves for bad times. But also, if we are sitting on a lot of money, then we're not necessarily fulfilling our mission.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, we'll move on to the next topic on the agenda. But before we do that, I just want to recognize the board member. But before we do that, I just want to recognize the board member Torres has joined us. Any, you're done? Thank you so much for the explanations and answer and all the questions. That's very helpful. So next on the agenda, our legal counsel is going to give us an update on our upcoming RFPs is Kal- oh, there she is. I like to have everybody sitting at it. Go ahead, Kalana.
Sure, thank you. Kalana Ali, Chief Legal Officer for OCHN. So before you today, I am just making the board aware of the upcoming RFPs in relation to the Children's Crisis Stabilization Unit. Right now, or sometime at the end of this month, we intend to actually release an RFP regarding service providers who can provide these services. OCHN has actually applied for a grant in relation to this particular service through the community to help, sorry, I don't have my laptop with me, but through the grant program that is, I believe is a two-year program right now. We also intend to actually renovate our current building at the RCC to actually house these services. Again, those will all be bid out sometime later this month. A date certain, we're still in the process, but per the request of the board, making you all aware of that. We are also releasing our ABA Services RFP. This is to address capacity in our network right now. So I know that this has not been bid, I believe, since 2016 or 2017. So right now, we're looking to increase capacity, and we expect that RFP to also go out at the end of this month as well.
Great. John Hall, did you have a question?
Yeah, it is, the Children's Crisis Unit building. Could you guys elaborate more on what that specifically is?
Sure. So it is actually the facility or the space that will house the services for the Children's Crisis Stabilization Services. The intent is to actually identify a construction management organization that can actually provide the services within the timeframe before the February 1st, 2022, start date of the services identified in the grant. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so we're just, right now, we're putting the RFP out for the management-
Correct. Nothing has been done. But per the request of the board, I wanted to make you all aware ahead of time, given the last call meeting.
And then who's sitting on that, on that RFP committee?
Right now, it's internal staff persons that are, will be sitting on that RFP committee.
Okay, do we know who yet, or is it still what, yet to be determined?
It's still being determined based on scheduling right now. So there is a tight timeline. As I've mentioned, February 1 is the start date for services. As such, we have to kind of coordinate some schedules. But that information can be provided to you once determined.
Dr. Tabby's question.
Yeah, Kalana, is at the RCC Resource and Crisis Center, is anybody getting displaced or is it an area that we're not using now?
Correct. It is a vacant area of the building that we currently have.
Dr. Han?
Yeah, the funding for this, what are the sources for funding for this project? And what will be the personnel requirements? Will there be additional staffing needed or will that be adjusted internally?
So the actual grant program is through the CCHC, and I'm looking for the actual acronym right now, so forgive me. It's the Community Mental Health Centers Grant issued by SAMSA, and it's, I believe, a $2 million grant. As it relates to staffing right now, we are looking for a service provider to provide that service in our space. There may be some need to increase internal staffing to support, but right now that is still being determined as the services are identified and staffed or identified by the service provider.
I have another question. So then you were mentioning if we need to expand staffing, then would there be a separate RFP for that?
Well, she meant, I think, internal staff, so no.
Oh, okay, so it would just be an internal?
I think that was, Ms. Dr. Hans's question was regarding internal staff, actually.
Okay, so but there would just be the use of more internal staff? Then there'd be more hiring? Is that what would happen?
Potentially, depending on the impact of the actual acquisition, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And any que- Dana?
Okay, currently have posted an Access and Crisis Director position. So that will help with overall crisis services and our front door access. So that will be a part of that project as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lefebvre.
Are there any more questions about the RFPs? Did you cover, you covered both of them?
Yes.
Are there any questions from the board members attending remotely?
I have a question. This is Hadass. So that sounds, hi. That sounds really wonderful that we got the $2 million grant and that we're going to be giving it to a service provider. Logically, so since it is for a service provider, I'm just wondering, since we have space in the Troy building, why we're choosing to have it at the RCC? I understand that it's crisis and you may have space there too. But, you know, just figuring all that out, especially since we already kind of have builders already in the building and it's, February's like here when you're coming to building. Right now, building in the community is very difficult to find people to build things. So I'm just wondering if there's been any evaluation on which location to put it in? Or just because, you know, that is where people go for crisis. It makes sense for it to stay there, although people could obviously always be moved. So I'm just wondering, has there been really an evaluation on the location? And are any, this is the second question, are, what's going to take place? Is it already, are we doing any of those services now? And what is the anticipation of the increased service? So it's ones about the building and ones about service, two questions.
So I'd like to clarify that we have not actually been awarded the grant. However, we have identified that this is a need for the people that we serve in the community. So we've moved forward without even necessarily having secured the grant funding yet. We are hopeful, however, that we will be successful in our request. As it relates to the question regarding the location, internally, we have looked at the services that are needed, our current position in the market, and have determined that where the RCC is located has been most advantageous for access to services for the people that we serve. However, this does not preclude or prevent us from, once we establish this location, assessing the actual use and value of the services in the community and expanding to additional locations where needed. We have identified that children crisis services is a need in our community and I think across the state in general, as been demonstrated or as has been demonstrated with many of the PIHPs and some of the discussions at the department level. So that is the reason why we've decided to utilize our current existing space at the RCC as well as for access purposes as well. So knowing that the people that we serve are in need of those services, that is an area that is, I think, heavily utilized by our current population, the persons serving the community. And then I believe you had another question regarding staff?
No, not so much staff. I just want to know what of the new services that we're requesting funding for, what are we currently doing?
So we currently offer those services, but I think this is more of an expansion because we do recognize the need. So it's not necessarily a new service that is not currently provided within our network. This is just an addition in recognition of the need there.
So amongst the providers that we currently use that are doing this service, can you name who they are? Just so we have an understanding. Not saying that they're going to get the new services. I'm just wondering, do we know who are, which providers are currently doing these services?
So right now, I believe we use Oakland Family Services is one of our main providers.
We have New Oakland who does the crisis, mobile crisis team. Common Ground is the current vendor for children crisis services. And the location currently is very small, so it can't accommodate a lot of families. And so that's really why we wanted to expand that service. But also, we wanted to have a place for families and children to take children in crisis because we know they do sit in the EDs for an extended amount of time. So with this additional crisis service space, Common Ground or whoever the vendor that is selected could actually serve more families and children who are in crisis as opposed to them going to the hospital EDs where they wait a very, very long time. Thank you, Ms. Lefebvre, Oakland.
That's, thank you for explaining. No, I mean, I'm 100% supportive of this and think it's needed and glad that you have found the grant. Do we have any idea if we do receive the grant, what month they'll let us know if we've received it?
Right now, we're still waiting. We're hoping within the next month or so. But I don't think that there is a date certain on that yet. Because services aren't supposed to, under the grant, start February 1st, 2022. So we are expecting for something to be released sooner than later.
Well, thank you so much.
I would just add that my personal experience, based on that, to see that we're expanding services and potentially doing a renovation is great news to me. So I appreciate it. And Kalana, I appreciate you answered a broad scope of questions. I don't know that you anticipated that.
Mr. Furman has a question.
Oh, Ms. Adam, do you have a question? Go ahead.
Yes, I have a question about the ABA RFPs. Kalana, you had mentioned that the RFP was for additional capacity. Are all of the ABA services being rebid? Or are we just looking at the additional capacity being bid out?
So if I'm understanding you correctly, are you asking, are all of the providers required to rebid the service?
Yes.
Currently, at this time, no. What we're doing is bidding the current network to add additional providers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Eric?
Oh, Dr. Hans.
Yeah, I am really very excited about ABA because I remember when my son needed that service and it was just written up by Ritwa and Lovis at UCR Wayne. That was sometime in the mid-'80s. So we had to, because there were no trained people, we read the paper and tried to improvise it. And I think that made a lot of difference in my family. But this is not something that stopped at the end of childhood. It's something that has to continue for the rest of, probably for a long time. The conventional wisdom at that time was that speech stops, language stops developing after the age of nine. The expressions don't mature after the age of 21. And in my family, that is not true. So this is very important service. And I think in the future, there will be a need for expansion of this. I would like a presentation on this. What are the current trends? What is the cutting edge? That's not something I think is in your domain, Kalana, but I think we'll appreciate a presentation on that.
I was going to say, that's not necessarily my wheelhouse. But if you need me to, I will become a clinician for you all for an hour.
Thank you.
Terrific. Okay, if there are no other questions, we'll move on to the next item. And thank you, Kalana, again, for answering a wide scope of questions. Next on the agenda is our policy management. We are going to get a quarterly update from our provider network team. And I think that we're going to have Gillian Trumbull and Rachel Denzmore.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I am Gillian Trumbull. I'm the Director of the Provider Network Team at OCHN. We are doing our third quarter update for the board this afternoon, this early evening, focusing specifically on self-determination. So I'm going to let Rachel introduce herself briefly, and then I'm going to handle most of the presentation. But no, she will jump in for some questions and any clarifications that may be needed.
Hi, everybody. My name is Rachel Denzmore, and I am a Supervisor of the Provider Network Team. I've been working at OCHN close to eight years. I think it'll be eight years in two day, three days. And before that, I had been a case manager for IDD providers for the last 18 years. So I, when I came on into OCHN, I had already had experience with self-determination as a case manager. And now, on the flip side, I've had the last almost eight years working more on the programmatic side of it. So hopefully, I can answer all the questions that you have since I've seen all facets of it, but you never know. It's good to see you all.
Thank you, Rachel. Next slide, please. So this is just a brief overview of the Provider Network Team structure. As Rachel mentioned, she is one of the supervisors on the team, and one of the initiatives that she oversees is self-determination. Can we go back just a couple of slides? Let's see. Okay. I think we can probably skip team overview and go to next slide. Which is not happening for me. So. Okay. Okay, so as I mentioned at the beginning, typically when we do the quarterly update, the team will focus on three different initiatives and provide an update, given some of the board interest in self-determination. For this quarter, we're going to focus only on self-determination. You should have received a quarterly report packet. And if there's any information or questions within that outside of self-determination, I'm also happy to answer any questions. But next slide, as we get into self-determination. This is the annual plan goal. It's a community education goal where we're focused on creating opportunities for outreach, training, and support regarding self-determination. This has been a goal in some capacity for many years and has been in process for many years. With Rachel taking the lead, each core provider has a self-determination lead within their own organization. And then we host regular quarterly meetings to disseminate any updates, changes, provide any technical assistance. There's the core providers problem solved together. And then Rachel also sits on our statewide, the statewide self-determination work group. Next slide. So what is self-determination? Self-determination is a philosophy, and it embodies a set of principles and values that people with disabilities should have freedom and support to decide how they live and participate in community and to control their resources. So there's OCHN supports self-determination, the culture of self-determination for everybody, regardless of who they are, regardless of what services they receive, and regardless of whether they opt to engage in a formal self-determination arrangement. So I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about that and hopefully kind of providing some clarification to how we view the culture and the philosophy of self-determination versus some of the programmatic requirements and why it may work well for some people and may not be another person's ideal option. Next slide. These are the core tenets of self-determination. OCHN did not create them. They are from the Center for Self-Determination. And we've linked the website at the bottom of the slide here. But there's five principles, which is the freedom to decide how one wants to live their life. So where do they live? What kinds of activities does a person want to engage in? Who are their friends, their circle of supports? The authority over a targeted amount of dollars. Support to organize in a way that's life-enhancing and meaningful to the person. So if, for example, somebody is authorized, you know, I'm making up numbers, of course, but 40 hours of community living supports in a month. Maybe it's not broken down equally by week. Maybe one week, somebody requires 10 hours of support, but the next week, they're going to need 15 hours of support. And so they have that flexibility within the scope of their authorization. Along with that comes the responsibility to use public- Along with that comes the responsibility to use public dollars wisely and to recognize the contribution individuals with disabilities make in their community. And then confirmation is really nothing about me without me, that people with disabilities who are self-directing and people who are not self-directing should be at the table for discussions about what matters in their lives. So, next slide. So that's kind of where we get into, when we talk about the philosophy of self-determination, that's something that OCHN embraces as part of our culture, regardless of whether you're a person with mental illness, an individual with IDD, intellectual and developmental disabilities, or if your child with serious emotional disturbance. You should have choices. You should have choice of who your core provider agency is. Within the core provider agency, you should have choice of who your supports coordinator or case manager is, who your service provider may be for any direct services you receive, choice of practitioners, the ability to say, you know what, this supports coordinator doesn't really meet the needs of me and my family, and I'd like to select another supports coordinator. That's something that should be able to be done for anybody, regardless of where they receive services, what core provider they receive services from, what their disability designation is. And that is sort of the culture of self-determination, separate from the program, for lack of a better term, of self-determination, where we count, we count how many people are engaged in self-determination arrangements. So with that, I'm going to move a little bit into the discussion more about self-determination as an arrangement. And there's a few terms we just wanted to run through with the board and any audience members before we continue on. Can we go back one slide? So the three terms you will hear frequently when you're talking about self-determination, and you're talking about it in terms of an agreement and an official enrollment in the self-determination arrangement, is employer of record or EOR. That really just means that you, as the person receiving services, or your representative, is the employer. So that's the person who's hiring staff, firing staff, recruiting staff. Certainly, there can be some assistance provided in that, but you, as the individual, are the employer. And then the fiscal intermediary, which Rachel has informed me was recently changed in term to financial management services. So you may start to see that used interchangeably or see documents from the departments, which more to a financial management services definition. But the fiscal intermediary is the organization who assists the employer to pay the bills and manage the budget. And then the individual budget is the budget for the authorized Medicaid-covered services. Next slide. There are about five services that are appropriate for self-determination arrangements. The first two are the most common and the most popular, and that's community living services, CLS, which is a service that's used to help individuals access their community, to increase self-sufficiency, to work on goals that may increase the person's ability to participate in the community without supports, or potentially work on some activities of daily living, or cooking skills, or those are just a few examples. Socialization. And then respite care, which is a break to the primary unpaid caregiver. These are brief definitions. The Medicaid Provider Manual has much more extensive definitions and is linked in this slide, if you're interested in viewing more about what those services entail. Essentially, those services are going to have individuals who are direct support professionals working directly with people served to provide services and supports, either in their home or in the community. And those are the two most common services that people self-direct, and those are services that are most frequently authorized for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. They most certainly are available, if it's medically necessary, to adults with mental illness and/or to children with SED. It's, however, if you look at how it's usually authorized, it's most commonly used within people with IDD. Next slide. Other services that are appropriate for self-determination would be supports coordination or case management, supported employment, which is job development placement, coaching, and follow-along. And then individual and/or group therapy, which is your mental health treatment service provided by a credentialed mental health professional. And again, we've linked the Medicaid Provider Manual below. So if you have interest in learning more about those services, you're able to do that. These are services that are a bit more complicated to self-direct and where people often opt not to move into self-determination arrangements. So, next slide. I'm going to give just, I don't think I'm going to go through each box in extreme detail because I know that it's not interesting to listen to somebody read, but just did want to give you a little bit of an overview of the difference between self-determination versus a traditional arrangement. So choice of service provider, and we touched on this, really, this is the individual who's interviewing, hiring, and terminating workers. In traditional services, so services without a self-determination agreement in place, the individual still has the option to do those things, or has the option to have staff assigned by a provider agency. Of course, the supports coordinator and case manager is available to assist either way in either arrangement. With rate and wage setting, rather, the individual's going to set the staff wage within identified parameters. So there are specific Medicaid parameters, and then the individual can set the wage within those parameters and within their individual budget. When it's a traditional arrangement, the provider agency is going to set staff wages based on their organizational wage structure. And with hiring, maintaining, and terminating staff, again, that goes to choice, where the individual really is hiring, maintaining, and terminating versus a provider agency and the traditional arrangement. For payroll and taxes, the fiscal intermediary acts on behalf of the employer of record to direct and perform those functions versus the provider agency acting as the employer and performing those functions. Next slide. Workers' compensation. Again, the fiscal intermediary is working on behalf of the individual to secure insurance, and the cost is then incorporated into the person's budget. In a traditional arrangement, the provider agency manages it. For criminal background check, the FI completes the background check. And then if there is something that appears on the background check, the individual can determine within some parameters if they want to move forward with the hiring process. So, for example, if something came back on the background check that was a misdemeanor that maybe happened 15, 20, 15 years ago, the individual does not believe that it's relevant to the task that they're being hired to perform, then they can move forward with hiring that individual. If something shows up and, you know, it's a felony involving embezzlement of funds for vulnerable persons or something like that, that's going to be a situation where even if the person wants to move forward, Medicaid rules and regulations would not allow for that person to continue moving forward in the hiring process. In a traditional arrangement, the provider agency is going to complete that background check, and then they're going to make decisions based on what their organizational policies and procedures are for hiring individuals who may have something show up in their background. When it comes to training, again, the individual's responsible to make sure that their employee trainings are up to date versus a provider agency assuring all of their employees are trained and all trainings are up to date. And then the same for recruitment of workers and backup workers. The individual's really taking the lead in a self-determination arrangement versus the provider agency being responsible to recruit workers and manage backup plans in a more traditional arrangement. So I hope that gives a little bit of a picture of how that may work with the different services that we talked about. So CLS and respite versus case management, supports coordination, supported employment, or your individual and group therapy types of services. And then next slide. These are the current self-determination numbers. So you'll see for our two IDD providers, community living services and MRC, the numbers of people opting to self-direct are much higher than when you look at our three adult MI providers. For the IDD network, all of the people who are self-directing are receiving either CLS or respite, or both, oftentimes both. For adults with mental illness, that may or may not be the case. And then next slide. So I did specifically want to touch on adults with mental illness because I know that that has come up multiple times with the board, and there's a lot of question about it, sort of questions about how it may benefit people with mental illness versus people with IDD and what some of the differences are. So some of the feedback that we hear from adults with mental illness and from providers is that for community-based individual and group therapy, community-based providers, they're often not willing or able to manage the self-determination arrangements. They're often not comfortable working with individuals who may have more significant behavioral health needs, and they often don't accept Medicaid insurance and rates. So those are barriers that prevent or stop a self-determination agreement from moving forward or make it far more challenging. And so what we often hear for adults with mental illness is, you know, I have choice of who my therapist is within CNS or Easter Seals or TTI. Or if I'm not happy with TTI, I can shift to Easter Seals or vice versa and have access to my choice of therapist, case manager, et cetera. So people served often report really not wanting to manage self-determination arrangements for these types of services when choice exists within each provider agency. So what OCHN has really tried to focus our efforts on over the past year is not saying whether self-determination is right or wrong for any individual, but to be able to provide support and resources and education so that people can make those decisions. For adults with mental illness, frankly, what we overwhelmingly hear is that it's not really something that we're particularly interested in for the reasons that I just mentioned. So then, from OCHN's perspective, we just need to make sure that people understand it. And then if they understand it, which I think people do, and opt not to self-direct, then that means it's not right for them. And that's self-determination in the philosophy sense, in that they're deciding this is not something that we want to do. For adults with, or for people, rather, with IDD, sometimes it's a more advantageous option because it allows people to have a little bit more control about who's coming in and out of their home in terms of their daily or weekly staffing supports that they may receive. So with that, Rachel, did I miss anything before we move into the next slides and questions?
No, you did a great job.
Okay. So the next slide is, I believe, the budget overview slide, yes. So MDHHS mandates that self-determination is discussed at minimum annually as part of a person's person-centered planning process. And people can make changes at any time to their option to self-direct, but it should be discussed at least annually. And then any Medicaid-covered service is authorized via the person-centered planning process. The funding source for anything related to self-determination is Medicaid, and that is built into our annual services budget. And so there's no specific costs or additional costs required for self-determination. And so with that, I believe the next slide is questions, and we will turn it over to board members for any questions you may have.
Thank you for the report. We should recognize that board members Newman and Lansman have joined us. And I believe that Malkaya and Dr. Hans had an interest in self-determination at one point.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, and that kind of helps me understand what are the barriers for the adults with mental illness as far as services and self-determination is concerned. But at the same time, I would hope that there is outreach to educate that population about this, and perhaps will give them some sense of autonomy over their care, even if they choose to not avail of this opportunity. The other question I had was, I was reading something about, and it may not be relevant to self-determination, but I wanted to understand a little bit more about how the power of attorney for mental illness treatment occurs and as it is for medical condition in the event a person is not able to make good judgment about their care.
Okay. You cut out for just a minute, but I think I got both of the questions. If I did miss it, please let me know. But in terms of education and outreach to adults with mental illness, yes, OCHN, we agree with you wholeheartedly that we need to provide outreach, training, education, and that has really been the focus of the annual plan goal over this past year. It's, in all reality, been far more challenging with COVID and a lot of the restrictions and being able to be in front of people. But we continue to have the virtual technical assistance meetings and are looking at trainings that we can provide in the future to all people about self-determination, both as a philosophy and agreement. The next question related to power of attorney, I am certainly not an expert in power of attorney, and so I don't want to go too far down any path that's outside of my scope. But we do certainly support alternatives to guardianship and supported decision-making. And Vicky Suter leads a work group focused on that specifically, but wholeheartedly kind of support and try to provide education efforts to, instead of utilizing full guardianship when appropriate, instead utilizing power of attorney arrangements. So I'm not sure if that entirely covered your question, and I will certainly try to answer anything that you may have, but it is sort of outside of my scope.
Thank you.
Of knowledge. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Not sure if I lost the room, or if you can still hear me.
I can still hear you.
I can still hear you, Jillian.
Okay. Is the room able to hear me? Are others on the phone able to hear the room?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
There's a chime.
Yes.
So how do we know that providers who have said they're on board for this are actually presenting it as a program option to individuals? For example, are they signing something when they decline or accept?
So you did cut out for me, I believe, is it Ms. Root on the phone? You did cut out for me, but I think I got your question. So if I didn't, we'll go back to it. So we do annual audits of our provider network, and discussion of self-determination is one of the items that's audited and documented.
Jillian?
Yes.
I just also wanted to add that Medicaid mandates that it's being talked about annually. So most of our, well, all of our core providers have incorporated it into their person-centered planning training. And normally, there is a documentation that they sign or they check a box off saying that they have been advised of what self-determination is and whether or not they're accepting it.
Yes, thank you, Rachel. And then that is audited so that we confirm that that's occurring.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I think Malkaya had a comment or question.
Okay.
Can you hear, yeah.
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you for the presentation. I have been asking for this for some time. I have been asking for this for some time and I apologize for being late, didn't know 75 was closed.
Oh, yeah, I did see that there was an accident or something, yes.
Took a whole lot longer than seven minutes today. But anyway, I'm wondering if we are not asking the wrong question. Instead of asking why people don't want self-determination, I believe the better question to ask is, what do you need to live the self-directed life that you want to live for yourself? And what would that involve? Because everything that I've heard in this presentation today reinforces what I've been saying all along. I don't see how it benefits adults with mental illness. Because if I had to manage a budget for a case manager and a therapist on top of everything else that I had to do, I wouldn't have done it. I just wouldn't have done it. I don't see how it adds to my life. I don't want to say that it doesn't for others, but I think it should be an individual choice. And the fact that you are asking adults with mental illness and they're saying the same thing that I'm saying, is saying to me, we need to listen to the people that we're serving.
Yeah.
Why add a burden that we don't need to add? That's why I'm saying, oh, go ahead, Jillian.
No, I'm so sorry. I can't see you, so I didn't realize that you weren't finished. Please finish and then I will talk.
No, I get on the soapbox. I'll get off.
Well, I'm only going to say that I agree with you. And I think that, you know, I can only speak for myself, but I don't think I'm speaking, you know, in any opposition to sort of OCHN's general position that we agree with you, that our job is to provide information and resources and education. But if people tell us that this is not something that they want to do, then we need to respect and hear that. And then that's when we get sort of into the difference between the philosophy, which isn't a program and we do support that. And that kind of goes to the question that I think is a really good question and we should try to incorporate that into how we speak about things. But the question of what do you need to live a self-directed life? That's really more about the philosophy of self-determination that applies to everybody versus the program of self-determination, which has some very specific technical requirements. And what we're hearing at this point is that people just, it's a complication they don't want in their lives and I think that's fair.
And what, I'm sorry, a follow-up. With that being said, the amount of time, effort and money that we put into promoting this, I know we have to offer it. And education is wonderful. It should be done. But at one point, I felt it was a pressure on the providers to provide more people on self-determination. And having heard from the people that we serve, that it's not something that they would want to participate in, then is that where our efforts need to be focused?
So, yeah, and I will say that I know that this is a topic of conversation for our upcoming annual and strategic plan and how we look at it moving forward as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We have another question from board member Root.
Thank you. So just thinking here, are we able to bring this up to a committee that's made up of individuals served and ask them how they would like it to be structured and what self-determination like is for them? Or are these elements that are already in the program, like mandated by Medicaid?
The elements in the program are mandated by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. So we have a self-determination technical assistance document and that is what we follow and are held following for the technical program elements of a self-directed agreement. So we certainly do bring people to the table for feedback. Again, it hasn't happened as much as we'd like over this past year. But we bring people to the quarterly meetings on occasion. I know Rachel presents to various work group meetings with some regularity. And then I know this is something that's a frequent topic of presentation at the state level as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Are there any comments or questions from board members participating remotely? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to our next agenda item. Thank you very much, Jillian and Rachel, for the terrific report and answering the board's questions.
Sure, thank you so much.
Next on our agenda is other business. And there are actually three items under other business. And I think Jonathan Lansman is going to present the three items. But I think if we take them all together and then save our questions for the end, if that works.
Okay, there we go. All right. Before I go into my three items, I'm going to pass the baton over to Dana for comments that she has on an update.
Good evening again.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Good evening. I just wanted to give the board an update. Hopefully by now you saw an alert in Boardable regarding the staff change and effective today. Dr. Nicole Lawson is no longer an employee of OCHN. So I just wanted to make sure this board was made aware of that change. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana.
All right. All right, so on to the other three pieces of business I'll bring up. Is Red? Okay. First item is the CEO evaluation timeline. So at this point, I would think that all of the board members have done their evaluations and turned those in. I'm seeing a head nodding from Edna. That's great. Thank you all. I know it was an effort to go through all the materials, but it's important. It's transparency and it's fairness in support of our CEO. So thank you. The next step on the timeline is for Wednesday. Wednesday morning, there will be a session of the CEO Evaluation Committee. And that's made up of Malkaya, Adam, Eric, Sarah and myself. I think most of us are planning to meet virtually on that call. Okay, just, I hadn't talked with you, Malkaya, but the others have said that that's because of the time, et cetera. But our goal there is to look, we'll go into private session. We'll look at the results from the evaluation, the detail. We'll look at the numbers. We'll formulate our, and I'm probably going to get in trouble for saying it with our attorney, but we'll formulate what we think will be the proposed bonus. And we may or may not draft the motion at that point. But the whole point of that two-hour session is that we, when we leave it, we will be ready to present at next week's board meeting a proposal with the bonus based on our perspective of your evaluations. Right? So at that next week's board meeting, when we have that topic, we'll have someone from our executive committee make a motion. There'll be a second. There'll be an opportunity for further discussion by the board as well. If Dana chooses, she can move us into private, I'm sorry, into the, just lost my screen. Into closed session, thank you. Where we can discuss it at greater length with her. And then we'll come out of that and then we will vote on the motion for the bonus. All right? So it's a pretty straight process. It's pretty clear. It's all based on the numbers that all of you did. And I say all of you, but including myself as well for the evaluation. So again, I want to thank you all for doing that. Are there any questions about the CEO? Well, you said questions after, so we'll, okay, that's fine. The next item is the CMHA board delegates. So we have a, is this for the conference coming up? Not for fall, it's for August meeting?
August meeting for voting.
Okay. So typically with the CMHA for the mental health, we have a few people that are standing members that vote because they are, they go to our executive committee. Malkaya is one, Sarah is another. But we have, and we have another number of slots. So one is for our CEO, that's Dana. But then I think we have two more slots for delegates. And I can't remember, I don't have the detail. Two more. So, and this would be to attend the standing executive, well, not the executive committee meeting, but there is a CMHA meeting and there'll be items on the agenda that need voting on for yays and nays. Okay? So we're looking for two volunteers to attend the meeting. And I wish I could tell you the date of the meeting. I was looking at the website, trying to find it. I cannot find it. But it's a virtual call and it's to vote on items that they bring up coming out of the executive session. And I don't want to put you on the spot, Malkaya, because I know you go to these. Did you know offhand of anything that's going to go in front of the general CMHA delegates board? Yeah. I couldn't find it either, so. But it moves pretty quickly. It's, that meeting is usually less than an hour when it's in, when we're in, at the conference. So on the virtual phone call, it's going to be even faster than that. So I'm looking for two people that are willing to stand up and volunteer to be delegates to this next session. And again, once we have, and Sheila, I'm hoping you'll be able to dig it up when we have this, when there is the next meeting for the delegates. All right?
I'm looking at it right now. I'll let you know before.
Okay.
I do have to notify them tomorrow is the deadline of the delegates, so.
All right, so we're on a sort of a deadline. So are there two people on the board that wish to become delegates to vote?
I'd be interested, all right. But I just need to know the day and time though to confirm, but I would be interested.
This is.
This is Sarah. I believe the meeting is August 6th at 9:30.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Does that help?
Are there any board members attending remotely that would like to volunteer?
That's a Friday.
I'll volunteer and if there's any issue, then I'll notify you tonight. But I'll go ahead and volunteer for August 6th, 9:00 AM.
9:30.
9:30, okay.
Jonathan, this is Adam. I'll volunteer as well.
Thank you, Adam. So we have our two delegates. Is there anyone else? Sounds like I'm pulling teeth, so. I guess you guys are the two additional delegates to vote at that meeting. Thank you.
Can I just clarify with Sarah, there's a special meeting on June, or July 20th that I have a notification for.
Let me look through my emails really quick.
From 10 to 11?
Okay, yeah, I was showing August 6th was the soonest, but let me look through really quick.
And I'm on their website calendar. I don't have either. I mean, I have the August 6th meeting, but.
There's a special meeting, July 20th.
I see a BILOS, I see a PAC meeting.
It's a, it's an action, I mean, approval of the budget and approval of the dues.
Ah, well, that would be the items that they would like us to vote on.
Are Adam and John Paul, are you both available on the 20th?
I'm looking. Let me verify that. And what was the time for the 20th?
I'm sorry, I could not hear you.
What was the time for the meeting on July 20th?
It's at 10:00 AM.
Yes, I would be available.
I don't know yet. I'd have to, I don't have my other calendar with me to look.
If, I recommend if John Paul's not available, then I am.
Well, you may have to vote using his name because I remember they hand out the, they hand out the things. I don't think it'll make that big of a difference.
Well, I think John Paul will find out tonight.
Yeah, I'll find out tonight. It's virtual, right? You said?
Yes.
Both virtual, okay. So that makes it easier. So I'll find out tonight.
And if you can just email me in the morning, then I'll, and I'll send out correct dates.
That was July 20th. At what time was it?
10.
10, Tuesday. That's next Tuesday. Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Adam. Thank you, John Paul.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Eric. Okay. So next item on here is the PAC Board Member Donation Reminder. So the Association, Community Mental Health Association of Michigan is, it is our association that represents CMHs, PIHPs, alliances, other groups. But they have a PAC, a political action committee, that asks for donations. It's been something that, I don't want to say mandatory, so that's a really wrong word to use, but it's been a practice of the board to provide a donation by every member and as well as some of the leadership in the past. And we've, we've had, I don't know about this past year, but in years past, we've had 100% participation by board members. It is not tax deductible because it's a political action donation versus a charitable donation. But I think it's a well, it's well worth the funding because we are going head-to-head with, let's see, the Association of Health Systems, the medical, you know, so the Meridians and the Meridians and the Molinas and that organization. And they have Buku bucks that they give and rein on our legislators. We don't collect that much. The Association has a whole lot less. But they try to maximize its benefit and payout from a PAC perspective to effectively get the leadership vote, the leadership of the House and the Senate of the state to hopefully vote in favor of things for us that benefit our organizations. So I would strongly encourage folks to make a check payable. In the past, Patrick has collected those, but I know we've been running in a hybrid situation. So if you were to bring a check in, I know that for this meeting or other meetings, Sheila would be able to capture those, collect them and get them over to Patrick. And I don't know if he still does that coordination, but he has in years past.
Jonathan? It would be helpful if this could be done by credit card. Last year, I wrote a check in our last meeting, I believe that was in February or March. That check didn't get cashed until July. I made some inquiries here. The check couldn't be found, so I wrote another one and both checks were cashed. So it would help if there is a little better organization because we're still hybrid, remote.
Doesn't make it challenging.
Yeah.
I don't know if they take credit cards, Malkaya. They do. Okay.
I'm sorry. They do take credit cards. There's a link available now.
Okay. But you might have to go to, you may have to go to their website to do it then, not to us?
Well, when the notice came out about the meeting, about the PAC, it was on the email. So if Sheila, if you don't have the same one I do, I can send it to you to send it out.
As I recall, it was, the link was there, but it was not activated or there was some issue with the money being transferred, so.
Well, the way that the email was written, they didn't collect very much money last year at all. So I think they want to do everything possible to be able to collect the funds. So Bob did say that the link is working.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So I am looking at that online right now and it's a fill-in-the-blank from their website with name, email, occupation, CMHA PAC donation, which is the amount, and then you hit us a bit. What it doesn't say on here is necessarily that you're part of Okuma or Ocean. And so I'd almost say, use a check, just so they know, so then we're sending that bundle in together. But only send one. But only send one. Yeah.
Jonathan, it's Adam?
Yes, Adam.
What, should the two line of the check say?
Say again, sir?
To who, to whom or what organization should the two line of the check reference? Should it be CMH PAC, should it be CMH AM PAC? Do you happen to know?
I do, CMH, space, PAC.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm on there right now, it does note employer. You could put board member, list board member OCHN on the, on the, if you're going to submit.
Okay.
But there's a link on the handouts that I emailed everybody into Boardable, and the link will take you right to the website for the donation.
Okay, thank you all for that, appreciate it. Other questions on this topic? I'm not good at fundraising, as you can tell. I'm trying to think, is there anything else on other business? I think that's it, CEO, delegates, PAC, okay, back to you, sir.
Okay, thanks, Jonathan. The next item on the agenda is public comment.
We do have a public comment that's online.
Oh, great.
Ms. Lindstrom.
Hi, everyone, so sorry, I had a hard time navigating my mute and video. So normally I wouldn't make any public comment. I'm Lori Lindstrom, I'm from Community Living Services, our Oakland County Division. And I know there had been some discussions, some presentation by Gillian and Rachel about self-determination. And I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I had the impression, and Malkaya, I'm more than happy to have further conversation with you outside of this, if I can be helpful, that the impression was having a budget would give a lot more responsibility to the person served in terms of managing their funds. And of course, the budget is part of a toolset that's provided to individuals served to help look at their authorization and manage their authorization, to understand their authorization, to understand the value of their services, right? Because it has a cost associated with every service that they're providing. But the intention is not to burden the person served with like management functions. That's really why there's a fiscal management service involved. They take, they usually, at least in the way I understand the process, the way it's implemented and at Community Living Services, is a support service. One of the express tools of that budget that we hope helps convey is, is the service you're receiving, because you see the associated cost, is that service, the value of that service, coming through to you? And I equate that when I'm talking to the people we serve as, like that benefit acknowledgement you get from your Blue Cross or your HAP or whatever insurance you have that says, this is the service that was provided by your service provider, your dentist, your doctor, whomever that person that's getting funds from your, from your insurance, right? So the example I give is I have had a lot of physical therapy in my life due to sports injuries. And one of the things I've looked at when I get that benefit acknowledgement is, wow, that physical therapist was getting all these dollars for the treatment that they were providing to me, and I don't feel like I'm getting that value. So I'm going to go to a different physical therapist because I don't feel like I'm getting the value of those dollars. So that's one tool. And again, I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but I did want to let you know that the intent of the self-determination process, the services provided through a self-arrangement budget, is not to lay on a lot more responsibility for that person served because there's really other things built into the process to support the person. Should they be interested in it, of course. But it's not meant to be burdensome. And I, I had the sense that maybe people were feeling like it just made all this work for the person served. It's supposed to provide more information and more empowerment, more understanding of services. And of course, someone wants to, needs to want to have that. But it's, there's, there's tools embedded in the process that that's supposed to help people. So I just wanted to make sure that that was coming across. And maybe it was, but I just wanted to add a little bit to the mix, so to speak. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the public comment. We welcome and encourage the public comment, so thank you very much. Is there any other public comment?
No other public comment.
Okay, then let's move on to board member comments. Can you do a roll call for board member comments, Sheila?
Ms. Bernard?
Hi, so thank you, everyone, for the meeting. I liked hearing about, and hearing all the presentations. I kind of would have appreciated seeing the audit before hearing the summary of the audit. I, I didn't see it online anywhere. So the reason I would have liked that is if I had any questions, therefore I could have asked the auditor. But now, I guess it has to be through email, so it's just a comment on the side. So I, my understanding is that we're going to get the audit prior to the board meeting so that we can vote on it in the next, I guess we'll have about a week before the 20th. So anyway, but I appreciate everybody and hope you have a good night and hope everybody's doing well. Thank you.
Mr. Furman?
I'd just like to thank everyone for their presentations tonight. The financial presentation, as well as the self-determination presentation, I think was really enlightening as to maybe the differences in enrollment numbers from either side of the network, whether it be the developmentally disabled population or the population that experiences mental illness, so thank you.
Dr. Guadalupe? I'm not sure if you're on mute. Mr. Torres?
No comments.
Ms. Newman?
Thank you. Again, my apologies for being late, Anya, I missed your presentation on the finances. I'm still very much conflicted. And I heard Ms. Lindstrom, I'm not responding back to her directly. But when we talk about self-determination, I guess I just, I need more understanding of the benefit to people with mental illness, adults with mental illness. So I'm sure that that information will become forthcoming. I also want to encourage the board to attend the Minority Mental Health Event tomorrow. There has been a lot of work that has gone into it. It's going to be a different event, it's not fact and picture, facts and figures and lofty platitudes. We wanted to do something very different, so we think that you will be delightfully surprised, I'll put it that way, by what we've come up with this year. So it's from 10 o'clock to 11:00 tomorrow online, and the flyers, they, they went out. So information is on the flyer, how to join in. But it should be a wonderful event, so I hope that you all can join us virtually. Thank you.
And Dr. Guadalupe just noted in the online chat, thanks for all the presentations. She appreciates all the information shared, she was having technical difficulties. So Dr. Hans?
I have no comments, thank you.
Dr. Todd?
Thank you, everybody, for all the time you spent on the presentations, and everybody of next week.
Mr. Cowan?
I just want to say congratulations to the management team for what appears to be a very good audit. I'm kind of an audit guy, so I was very interested in in the comments and read the material. So I just want to say congratulations. It's always hard to come through on all these financial matters, especially in a stressful year. And I think that deserves our, our thank you and our applause, thank you.
Ms. Root?
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Landsman?
Thank you. And I want to apologize for my tardiness, I too took, because Square Lake was backed up, I took the freeway only to find myself going to Flint. And then trying to route my way back south. And I'm not familiar with Auburn Hills from that side of it by Chrysler. Boy, is it interesting. So I will be on the regular streets in the future. Also, a couple of things that I did mention as other business, but just a heads up, there will not be a study session for July 29th, just so people know. There's conferences going on that Dana will be at, there's other activities going on. But it just didn't make sense to have a study session. We looked at a couple of items, but it just didn't make sense to have one and just throw it out together just for sake of a study session. So we are not going to have one for then. Heads up, we talked about the PACs, and we talked about the CMHA. I don't know if you guys caught it, but we have a fall conference coming in October, Sunday the 24th through Tuesday the 26th. We haven't had an in, an onsite in, what do we call it, a non-virtual, I don't know what the right term is, face-to-face conference in a couple of years now. So watch your calendars, it'll be available virtually as well, but it's up in Traverse City. It'll give you a chance, if you can make it, to meet other boards, other staff from elsewhere, a chance to mingle with our staff, but we haven't had much of a chance to do with COVID. So just pencil it in on your calendars. And I hope that you'll be able to attend that. As well, there's something called Board Works, which will, along with all the work that our staff has done in helping us get mentored and trained, there is something called Board Works through the, through the Association that will help you get spun up in their way of explaining how things work, how funding sources work, how organization works, what the mental health code is, developing disabled. So it's a, it's a wealth of knowledge, and I would strongly recommend for folks that haven't gone through all of the training, at least to start looking at some of those things. So just as a thought. And I appreciate that you guys have put together all the presentations. I really was looking forward to hearing from the auditors and with BDO and knowing what's going on. But I also know we have very strong controls in place. I'm an ex-auditor, by the way, Dennis, so. But I know we have very strong processes in place, controls in place. We're financially strong, we're trying to keep it that way. And offer a variety of services to our folks, above and beyond what's required under the mental health code. So thank you.
Ms. Lindemere?
I have no comments. Next on the, on the agenda is a adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll make that motion, or the second.
I hear a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.